Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Glens Falls Common Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, 7:30, and time for a regular session. Tonight, we begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Palmer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We open with public comments, so if anybody from the public would like to speak to the council, please come to the microphone, tell us your name and address. No rat mat dash to the podium?
This is my first time.
Great, welcome.
All right. My name is Jared Ferrullo, F-E-R-U-L-L-O.
Thank you.
And I live at 60 Leonard Street. And I am here because when I was, went to have my, to contest the assessment of my house the last two times, the assessment board said that I should go in front of you guys to voice some of my concerns because they were not addressed by the city and codes enforcement people. They were not addressed by the assessment office, and I even went to the mayor's office and it was, nothing was done. So, I'm here. Okay. The first, they both of them concern properties that are near my property. The first one is, I've been at 60 Leonard Street for 21 years. And the first property is the Cooper Street Ascend Mental Health Building, the shelter that they put up there. When they built that building, it was our understanding, because I'm actually speaking for a bunch of people in the neighborhood. It was our understanding that we are in a high water table area, and they were going to do something to address some of the issues with the flooding that we have there. At the time, before the building was put in, the flooding was rather minor. Then they went and put this building in, and they put it on a raised foundation. And since they have done that, these flooding in my backyard, my neighbor's backyard, and the neighbor adjacent to me has been extreme, to the point where I had to put in an $11,000 sub-pump system into my house. And we are also attracting ducks. I spoke with a gentleman years ago, I think he would have been one of the city engineers, his name was Chris. This is dating way back, and he said it was an infrastructure issue. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and I do have photographs of that. And both, and they are on record with the assessment board from the most recent assessment and the reassessment the city did years ago where they assessed everything from 75% to 100%. So it is on record for that. The second property that I would like to address is the former home of EVA Motors, which is now GT Motors. When EVA Motors was there, I had absolutely no problem with them. They kept the lot very neat and tidy, they had a couple rows of cars. It was a body shop when vehicles were repaired, they'd take the car in, they would repair the car, and the car would go out. Ever since GT Motors took over, I have pictures to show, it is now, looks like a scrapyard. There are 40 to 50 cars in there in various conditions, ranging from pole to up on bricks or blocks. There is also a Jersey block brick wall that, I don't know if you can see, that they placed between their property and the adjacent property. And they placed it there without getting a permit. And it is also against city code because it's by understanding that a wall of that size and that height cannot be that close to the road. Again, I've addressed this with the city and code office, and they said they were going to do something about it, and nothing has been done. GT Motors said that it's only a temporary wall, but in my opinion, anything that requires a flatbed truck and an industrial-sized loader to put in place is not temporary. Also, you know, and I'll give you that, I brought these pictures in for you guys to keep. You can see the lot and what it looks like in the various conditions that, the cars that are strewn about. My neighbor who is adjacent to him made an effort to sell his home, and nobody would even stop and look at the place once they saw GT Motors next door. And they just drove off. This is clearly affecting the market value of my home. Not that I'm saying I want to sell my home, I've been here for 21 years, I like Glens Falls, I like my home. It's all mine, it's paid off, it took a lot of work to do that. So, that's my little spiel for you.
Do you have your contact, your name and your contact information on there?
No, but I can, oh, I got one right here. I got like ninja eyes. Where would you like it? Right on the back?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I also believe that GT Motors is functioning as, even though I can't really prove this, I also think they're functioning as a repo yard because on one occasion, a vehicle was brought in on a tow truck, and then shortly thereafter, a gentleman showed up and smashed the window out to try to get into his car. And anybody coming into the neighborhood who receives something like that. So I don't know if they're licensed to do that or not. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Let me, give me, give me a few days to maybe a week. And I'll be, I'll reach out to you, and they'd either come to see you or have you come into the office and we'll review both concerned properties. Okay?
Okay, I appreciate it. Would you like this?
Yes, please.
Who wants to make that?
Ah, thank you.
All right, I thank you all for your time.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, appreciate it.
Can you give me a call, please?
518?
It's on.
I gave it up. Yeah, it's on. Thank you. Do you know Steve Briggs?
I know the name, Steve Briggs.
I think he said he used to work with you, he works with me now at Aimer.
Ocean?
Yeah, he works with me now over at the hospital.
Fantastic. Please tell him I said hello. Thank you. And then I'll, when I'm ready to meet, when I gather some information, I'll give you a call too, so you can be there, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we investigate our code to about junkyards and the city's scrap yards? Because it doesn't seem like we're a big enough city to really need to be having that.
We're definitely working with the current scrap area that we have.
Yeah.
GT Motors is listed as an auto repair shop.
Definitely take a look. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Anybody online, Peter?
No, we're just kidding.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, so next up, we have a presentation by our community development office, presenting the highlights of their draft of the annual action plan budget for the program year 2024, which actually begins in August of 2024, goes through July, the end of July in 2025. Let's ask the state why that, why that happens, and if we don't know what it does.
Yeah, I don't know. It just, that's, that's the schedule that is handed to me.
Very well.
Yes, that HUD handed to me. So I know you all have a full agenda tonight, and so I want to take a few minutes of your time. I was actually surprised this morning, we got the final letter with the final amount that the city was going to get from HUD this morning. So that changed a lot of what I was going to tell you about that it was going to be, you know, potential and maybe. So I've got solid numbers, but I don't have anything to give you today. It's $10,000 more than last year, and we are one of the very few communities that the Buffalo, that the HUD Buffalo office covers that actually got an increase this year. I think that's because we've been very focused on making sure that we've been able to get the money out of the community. So tonight, I just want to talk about the new CDBG budget that the mayor and I have prepared. And then, as I said, next week, you'll have the resolution and all the information, all down on paper. So each year, the city receives a community development block grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. That supports the development of a viable urban community for low and moderate income residents. The city is what's called an entitlement community, which means that we get this grant year after year without having to apply for it because we are the only city in the Glens Falls MSA, which includes all of Warren and all of Washington County. We were notified today, as I said, that we will receive $473,559, 473-559, starting in August, as the mayor said, for this new program here, which, as I said, as I said to Bob, is $10,000 more this year than the previous year. The money that we get, we use for programs to help support low and moderate income residents identified as those with an income lower than 80% of the area median income as established by HUD. So that number is $64,668 for an individual. This plan follows the directions of the five-year plan that was prepared in 2019. And it's the final year that we'll be following this particular plan. Like all the years, 100% of the money is planned to be used for low and moderate income individuals, a fact that's noted positively by HUD each time I talk to them on the phone. The bulk of the money is targeted to programs and, programs and improvements in areas identified as low and moderate income areas by HUD, which are identified by census blocks. We used to be able to identify them by the wards, but now, since that's changed, Census Block 705 is the old Ward 1, Census Block 702 is the old Ward 4, and parts of Census Blocks 703 for the old Ward 3, and 701 for the old Ward 5. To make it easy, I always refer to them as the wards when I'm talking to, especially to all of you, right? So in this budget, we're planning $130,059 to support projects and programs under the housing umbrella, to help low and moderate income residents retain their homes, protect their homes, and rehabilitate their homes, including single-family rehabilitation, rehabilitation, emergency rehabilitation and repairs. Not a lot of people know that we have a program about $10,000 to $20,000 a year supports primarily low-income people who have problems with hot water tanks or HVA systems, where they go and they don't have the money immediately to be able to fix it. We're able to go in and spend up to about $10,000 to be able to repair or replace those systems. Supporting, supporting.
Sorry.
That's all right.
You say like, a lot of people don't know that, is there anything that we're doing to get it?
We're working, I'm working with communications director to make sure that we get that out, yes.
I know in Albany, there's, they have a banner, right, on one of their buildings that says, "Call the Economic Development Office at this time."
Oh.
I can take a picture of it.
No, I was just thinking they could call Jeff, that's all. No, no, yes, please do, yes, because I mean, certainly, as I said, that's one of those, that's, I'm happy to, I'm happy to help as many people as I can, right?
And where do you get that? We're usually through the referrals from the agencies that you have.
Well, I was just going to say that, yeah, we don't usually have a lack of people calling, right? What ends up happening is they'll call.
But you said that there's not a lot of people.
That's correct.
No, right, no, right, I'm not arguing with you, right? But, but we, we will traditionally go through between $15,000 and $20,000 worth of emergency rehab money, is what we call it, emergency rehab money, over the course of a year, right? But traditionally, what happens is we'll get a referral either from a family member or from Community Action, or from the Wait House, or from Family Services, or from Open Door where there's, where somebody has an immediate presenting issue. Sometimes we get it, I think, I'm not sure, I thought one of the councilmen, but now that I looked at the three of them over here, I'm not sure if it was one of them or not. Well, we got a, we got a reference from somebody, it might have been one of the supervisors, anyway, for that very thing, right? They were saying, I've got a resident, there's a problem, she doesn't know how to fix it, and we say, okay. And I send somebody in, and within 48 hours, usually, I can get somebody there and get the repair started.
So we could like, take banner space when there's a banner on Glens Street?
Yeah.
I agree that, that's not nearly enough people know about it either, even though there's more referrals than we can.
Yeah.
I think in general, people don't understand about CDBG, right? Even if they in time got a benefit, then they forget about it. So anyway, we could remind people on a more regular basis and the wider crowd, we should.
Absolutely.
Could you repeat what you said, the income threshold last?
Okay, so the, the, well, okay, it depends on how many people there are in the house, right? So it's 80% of the area median income, and the area median income currently is $64,688. So 80% of that would be $51,750, right? But if you, but if you have a family that's for one person, if you have a family of three, it's $66,550. If you have a family of four, it's $73,900, and so it goes up. You know, two, three, four, five, HUD goes out to eight, but if you have more than eight, there's a formula that you can.
So it's 64 or one?
So $64,000 is, no, $64,000 is the area median income. So that's, and that's, it's, it's, it's a little bit complicated, so it's 80% of that number. Anything below that are considered low and moderate income people. Actually, my numbers all go all the way down to 30%. So we deal with people who are in the, who are 30% of the $64,000, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of $21,000.
So the $66,550 for a family of three, is it 80% of that, or that's what?
No, that's the 80%, yeah, so. And actually, why don't I do this? I've got a chart, I'll just send it out. Sure. Because it's, as I said, it, and actually, we just, this is just the raise, HUD updates that every year with about anywhere between 1% and 4% of an increase. Okay. Okay, so all of that, that housing money is in addition to two state grants that we have. One is the State Home Rehab Grant, which we got, which we were awarded in the, in December or January, which we got a contract for in May, and we're just beginning to get that program started. And then the second one is the homeowner grant that you guys are all familiar with, which actually, tonight, I believe you're going to be voting on, providing a grant to somebody in that.
How much money are those two grants?
The homebuyer grant is, is $439, and the rehab, the new rehab grant is $515,000. So the rehab grant is a three-year grant, the home grant is a two-and-a-half-year grant by homes and community. Okay, so that's housing. The next piece of it is infrastructure improvement, which we've got $189,000 set aside for, and that's to support the replacement of sidewalks, low and moderate income areas, and to support the installation this year of pedestrian safety signals at an intersection in the Alamo area. The third piece is the nonprofits, which most of you are familiar with, that's, that's one of the ones that I'm, I'm very pleased that we're able to do that. $70,500, we can only provide 15% of our grant at a maximum to the nonprofits. So and those are Glens Falls Senior Center, Cockling Center, Adrenic Vets House, Family Service, Warren Hamilton County's Community Action Agency, Tri-County Literacy, the YMCA Summer Camp Program, our own City Recreation Summer Camp Program, the Wait House, the Glens Falls Area Youth Center, and the Glens Falls Schools Backpack Program.
Split that $70,000.
Split that $70,000, right. So it's, it's between $6,000 and $9,000 per agency. So, and then the last bit is, is program administration, which despite the fact that it sounds like it just pays for people to do the work, it also supports, it supports part of my salary, it supports our consultants from CT Mail, it also supports, you know, paying for legal notices, other expenses that we have to deal with with the soft costs with regard to lead paint checks and asbestos checks and those kind of things when we do housing programs and the CDBG portion of the city's annual audit. So the CDBG, the CDBG program pays, I had that number, it's I think, $4,500 or $5,000 of the city's annual audit costs, because we are a part of that, that audit. So the other thing I want to mention is that this is the 50th year of the CDBG program that HUD has had. And it's the 50th year that the CDBG program has directly supported the city's programs and projects to help low and moderate income residents. And during that time, HUD has provided to the city $22,487,690.91, in case you were wondering, or roughly $449,000 per year. And in the last two years, I've directed the expenditure of $1.340,735,070. So I'm not sure where the 70 cents went, but there you are. So I'm happy to take any questions, realize as I said that you've got a full kind of agenda, so I don't, don't want to take any more time. I appreciate your support for this. I'm a big believer that this is incredibly important for a lot of our community who don't have any other opportunities otherwise. So I appreciate that. Any questions, concerns?
Thanks, Dan.
Get me pictures. I'm happy to.
I'll get you pictures.
And now I'm going if it's all right with the mayor, I'm going to watch the playroom practice.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you, Pat. And next up, we have Tom Gerard from DPW, Superintendent, to give us an update on current DPW affairs.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
I got, I got late notice about this. I think it was Friday, I found out I was going to speak, and my wife's danger said it was all weekend, so I, I threw some things together, or yesterday and today. So I have a bunch of things that we're doing, we have done, and we're going to be doing. I'm just going to read through them real quick, and if we have any questions, I'm more than happy to. I'll be a lot better at answering questions, I will be reading these. So anyways, since I think the last time I spoke, we actually had a fairly mild winter. Couple of late snowstorms, but besides that, it was pretty mild. But the springtime was very hectic. Our tree department had to hurry up and cut down over 50 trees between the Webster Avenue project and the Pride's Island project. Reason is, most people don't know, or they do know about this BAT, Long Year BAT law, that you can't cut trees down from April 1st to October 1st, a few years of government money. Second of all, I'm not going to say second of those because there's 19 of them, so I'll just keep them. We assisted at the Eastfield Stadium project, where they put in the new cement and bleachers and stuff. We hauled in over 200 tons of stone and helped where needed. This is, was a very impressive project. I mean, it was, it was a tough going, tough start, but went to the first game, and it's, it's nice. You ought to get down there for games next couple of weeks. It really came out nice, and it's only the start of revitalizing it, right Eddie? We finished open pickup on May 24th, even though people don't believe us. We did go through this whole city four times, and now we are just.
So now you're looking forward to seeing bags on the curb.
No, now we, so we have two, two gentlemen with a garbage truck every day that go out and do wards at a time, and we're going through that, and we'll continue going through that through the whole summer. I didn't notice this week it's starting to slow down, I think the grass is slowing down. People trimming their bushes are starting to slow down, maybe the heat's getting to them or something, hopefully. But yeah, we went through four times, pretty impressive, and got them done. We're done. I mean, we're going to get some calls, I'm sure the mayor's going to get some calls, councilmen are going to get some, councilwoman are going to get some calls and say, they got it out before Memorial, they got a picture of it, can you go get it? In rainy days, we have some time, we'll go get some stuff, but we don't want to make a habit of it. One really good thing, we just finished trenching and running over 1,000 foot of wire at Crandall Park in Havens Cove. So now, tomorrow, the cameras will be all functioning, all throughout the whole city. The last one is Crandall Park, what we call the X Field in the pavilion area. They'll be wiring that up tomorrow, and we also, during that, we actually brought wire and electricity to the pavilion in Crandall Park, so now, good. So now the pavilion actually has power, Havens Cove has power, Eastfield has power, now Crandall Park has power. It's, it's a plus, I mean, it's nothing great, but like last year, we were mayor, we had our balloon fest, we had to bring a generator up to run power, to get a speaker or something, so that's, that's good. And we did it throughout with our own electricians and our own handymen, so that was a really good one. I'll use names, Dean and Sage, you guys probably don't know them by name, they're building maintenance. They've upgraded all the bathrooms except Eastfield's big ceiling. And all the parts, new toilets, sinks, and now they all have hot water, never had hot water before. They continue to work on these and upgrade them at time of their time.
They should.
Excuse me?
They painted and it's boosted up the bathrooms.
Yeah.
I was there, I don't want to.
Yeah, we've done some.
Pressure washing, not bad.
We have over 35 roll holes, we have to repair, pave, back pave because water is sore, as you probably heard throughout the winter and spring, there was quite a few water breaks, a lot of sore calls, so we started them actually today. There's 35 of them, the summer, pretty, pretty big, summer's smaller. We've hired a contractor to replace the roof at DPW. Please, please vote yes tonight. I understand it's on tonight's agenda. Please vote yes. I've been told it's been leaking over 20 years, I've witnessed it over 11. And in the meantime, in the short term, building and coves are going to move out of there for a little while. I don't really know where they, they're going. So, once the roof is on, once the roof is on, then we'll start working our way down. The walls upstairs have to be torn out and replaced, ceiling tiles, then we'll move down to our area because we have some deteriorating walls in our area too, not as bad as upstairs, but we'll get to that. So that's really important, a big plus. My foreman, Mark Lambert, told me he will never see that happen, the roof will never be replaced. Been leaking for 30 years, they won't replace it now, so I'm going to make him a liar. He doesn't give a.
He doesn't give a.
We plan on replacing three intersection traffic lights and controls this year. Right now, it's Glen and Sanford, Sanford and Ridge, and possibly Washington Glen. Mayor and I are going to meet with the engineer and Aaron when I get back from vacation, hopefully. Yeah, it is a setup for that. All the playgrounds are looking really, I think, looking really good. We just came off a really successful kids lacrosse at Crandall Park this year. We used to send them to Murray Street, but Murray Street's getting, we've renovated a little bit with the grass, hopefully the grass once it starts growing. So we put them up to Crandall Park, actually worked out well. The first week was kind of hectic because the Little League fields were unusable. So Little League people were showing up at the field, and we had to tell them lacrosse had already rented it out for the six weeks, and they got over it. And now, actually, there's an adult softball league on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at Crandall Park now, so I haven't heard any complaints on that one yet, so that's a good deal. I don't know if you've noticed in your lodge, but we have to replace a lot of faded and old stop signs and street signs. They actually moved through the budget already, so I'm going to have to find some one from somewhere. You do, you go around, you don't notice it, but all of a sudden, you see a bright red sign that doesn't have graffiti on it. That's good. We did, pulped out a little bit up to Crandall Park with Warren County soil, the mayor was there. I'm not sure if it's already the others, went there for this NVC specie tear out. I think we took six truckloads of brush, it wasn't, you couldn't count that very much, it was mostly vines.
Did it actually six truckloads before they were done? I was just there the one day.
But again, it's, it's hard to judge because we can chip it because it would get stuck in the chipper and really didn't squash down very well, but so we helped out with that. Our flowers are up, they're all up now, we got the baskets finally hung today, not because we were behind. Not because we were behind, we didn't get them until yesterday, so they're hung. Downtown is up and running. Joey, who did it last year, did a great job, did a lot of compliments of the flowers last year. He's back under this year. Garbage, we do it every day downtown. I think we have twenty-five or twenty-six canisters out there. It's, there's an uptick. I mean, I think it's good and bad. I think it's showing that downtown is doing well, but it's also showing that the residents, some of the residents upstairs are cheap, and they're using ours for residential garbage. We chased some of that out with some memos, and the memos seem to work. We haven't had to go in further yet. Our mechanics, they're still doing a remarkable job with the three guys, two and a half, actually, one of them's training in the electric part. They're doing all our vehicles, they're doing most of the police, most of the fire, and a lot of the water and sewer vehicles too, so we saved tons of money. The lift you guys helped us purchase last year has really paid off. I mean, fire trucks are up in the air. I don't wonder what they do. The new chiller at the rec center should be installed anytime. I might have recorded that earlier in the spring, but the contractor fell behind a little bit, and then with the Fire Road and Webster project right now and whatnot, it was just as good to keep them away, so they weren't getting in each other's way. The sidewalk contractor for this, what we call the smaller deal, where they're just doing troubled ones over the last three or four years, where Kerry was getting calls, they're started, I think they're through the first war, I think I seen them in the second war today, and.
Is that Catalama?
Catalama. And the large sidewalk list was vetted out in Louisiana. The people that did it last year, twenty-twenty-three, oh, that's on here.
That's on site too.
Okay, so hopefully that will go pretty soon. Getting ready to send our paving list out for a bid. We haven't got to that yet. And the last thing I have, last but not least, we do continue to train our people. We just went through chipper training, dig sig training tomorrow for six guys. Work zone flagging and some other stuff coming up next week when I'm gone. And we did a gym, our recreation, Foreman and I saw today, Recreation Parks and Equipment webinar two weeks ago, so it's going now. I know I missed some stuff.
Only nineteen things, Tom. It's a good thing I didn't give you more time.
No, you guys are lucky enough.
Before anybody, before anybody has any questions, I just wanted to thank you. We put out a bid, we, you allocated a million dollars of ARPA money towards DPW, and included in that was the roof. We put that out to bid, either late last year, I think it was, and the bid came back at eight-hundred thousand. And so after a conversation with Tom and Jeremy, they went back and they looked at it, said, geez, if we change this wording, if we try this a little different way, we think we can get it down. They saved themselves four-hundred thousand dollars that now can go to helping the rest of these building projects, that the long list, we didn't have nearly enough than a million dollars to cover the list you had. And if we used eight-hundred thousand dollars to the roof, we'd have very little left to do anything else. So that is Tom, Jeremy, and the work that they're doing. Same with the electrical, they're talking about the trenching of the wires. That, if we paid outside contractors, there's a whole heck of a lot less we would be having for the rest of the city, so I want to make sure I thank you. And Tom's got a new employee, what's her name?
Monica.
Monica. And so, that's taken over for Kerry, and Kerry's working with Monica very well. It's all going very well, it's great. All the equipment's been purchased, the iPads for the C-click fix. They're now getting ready to do the testing, where they send a bunch of different, geez, we've got a problem with this tree or this pothole, to going into that test mode. Again, it's all because of Tom and moving forward. I think that would be really impactful for you.
I think I was just telling you guys or something. I'm getting probably, Monica's new, so she doesn't fend off some of the callers, so I'm getting probably seven to ten notes from Monica every day to go look at this, go look at this power, go look at this.
It's people other than me too.
No, you go through chip, so yours is coming from chip. Yeah, so it's going good. Anybody else?
Other questions?
I should. Tom, are you, are you guys doing any of the work in the building against the roofs, or is that going out?
We're going to look at it. Dean, we did hire a helper.
Yeah.
Dean, not that he didn't need it, he needs it, but he also, these guys are going up there, not just Dave, they've been there for thirty years. They started at eighteen years old. You know, they're only fifty years old, but they're talking about returning at thirty years. And like him, I mean, if he left right now, we would, I mean, you ask him whether the water shut off his Havens Cove, he'll bring it to the water shut off. He's out here at Crandall Park, where do we got to go to do it? You know, he just, they know this stuff. It's not documented, it's not GPS yet. We are starting to give GPS, we got a new lady who will let us, that is hired for that. But he's, so we got somebody with him. Our electricians return next March. So I have somebody working with him right now, a mechanic, but he's very interested and very qualified, so.
But then you got a backfill afterwards?
Then we got a backfill. So right now, we're sort of running, knock on the window, the mechanics area is fairly quiet, so we're not getting hurt there. We took Sage, he got promoted off the rec crew, we hired somebody from rec crew, for the rec crew. Laborers are a little bit easier to hire right now than CDL drivers.
With the lights that are coming down in the downtown, like along where the street trading, with the street skating projects going on, are we able to use those lights in other places? Are they so old that better off than using them?
Yeah, I'm looking at one to be replaced. We had an accident last year over by, actually, Bosman came to it, call me, over by the church over on Bud Street, not sure which one. That was a metal pole. That might be one to be replaced. These days, everything is new, is smaller, a little, and it's, even our traffic signals that we're talking about, they're flat now. They're not the big, heavy-duty things that we're getting. So, to answer your question, probably not. In fact, one of my employees today asked me if he could have one. I said, "You're going to have to pay for scrap metal, and get it out of here yourself." Yeah, that's, that's the problem. The stuff is so old, it's, they're making everything smaller. Like, even our, I don't want to go on, I know you guys got a big agenda, but our street lights, our traffic lights.
Yeah.
We can't even find parts for some of them now. You know, the panel box you see there, they have graffiti on it, or painting, you know, you try to mark Jarvis's salage in anything he can from any box, because you don't know when the next one's going to go out, and you don't know when you're going to have, they call them cards, and they're just not available.
Do we have the fabricating stuff going with the staples, say, traffic light? I remember a couple of them because it was so old.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. He has a, the shop on Clastery, he has a.
Traffic light?
Traffic light in there, and he runs his programs. It's like, he simulates which one, he does exactly, Ridge Street, Staple. Keep them for always stops and all. I love them. They don't lather, they don't lather in storms.
And when they get, when a traffic light is ready to down anyway, it turns the four-way stop, so.
You would not believe the people, every time one goes down, and the four-way stop, we still run stop signs out. The person's trying to go through first. Anything else?
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have committee reports. Councilman Clark?
No report.
Councilman Donahue?
The stability will be on Monday, the sixth, June seventeenth, at five forty-five.
Thank you. Councilman Landry?
Lordy.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Yes, Recreation will meet tomorrow at one P M. And Building and Co's met yesterday. We had a full agenda. We talked about cannabis. The committee agreed with a proposed change that PJ had to create a new definition for adult recreational retail, which will just give the planning board the ability to have oversight, site plan review. We talked about murals. So, there's not a definition in our code for murals. So right now, PJ is using a sign definition in order to have murals reviewed. However, we did, we do feel that there's a difference between signs and murals, because signs are to, in our code, it says they are to promote, I'm paraphrasing, but to promote a person or a business, versus murals are often public art. So, we do want the planning board to have a review, but we don't think the fee that people have to pay to promote their business should be associated with the murals for public art. So, we are still discussing that, but that was a big source of discussion. And then, we talked about short-term rentals. Councilman Landry has brought it up a few times. I had said before that the committee has, you know, looked into this, but we're going to be doing the zoning update and the comprehensive plan update. But there is a sense that maybe we need to do something faster. I know Councilman at large Clark feels that way too. My feeling is that part of the benefit of the comprehensive planning process is that it includes a lot of stakeholder input, great community input, but also includes from maybe people who have short-term rentals, or from hotels, or from realtors, or whoever else. So the committee feels that we'd like to hold some sort of public workshop on the topic of us, short-term rentals, and have people come and tell us, you know, what they think, what issues, what issues are important to them. There's so many different directions we can go with this, and so we want to start by getting input. We have a lot of budget meetings coming up in the next month, so we're thinking after that. But I just wanted to put that out there, and if the public has any thoughts, they can feel free to direct them to the city or to me. Let's see, we also talked about our inspection program, which we hired a new fire prevention officer, Aaron Worf, and we met him last night. We are now ready to start inspecting, we're going to start with assembly spaces. Again, the city is mandated to do these inspections for assembly spaces, businesses, multi-unit dwellings. And so now that we have all the staff in place, we're going to start doing that again. We'll probably get some, I think there's a form already written that we're going to get to Paul, the communication director, to put out there. And the other thing we talked about was tents. So, when someone applies for a permit for a tent, right now, we have a way to look at that on a case-by-case basis. But what if someone has like a series of events where they might need an ongoing permit, and they don't need to be inspected for every event? So that's something that the staff, J D and Aaron, we're going to talk about and get back to us with some suggestions. So it's kind of a whole agenda. Yep.
Great. Councilman Landry?
Tomorrow, there's a meeting of the technology committee, which will be on teams, five-thirty.
Councilwoman Goodman?
Yes, the special projects, we met last night at Havens Cove. And it was a great meeting, we had a great turnout. I thought it was really well for the first meeting. We had a lot of feedback for suggestions for Havens Cove. I think it was well received, and we are planning more meetings. And we had to be a community meeting, because we didn't want it to, people to think that was four to five award meetings. So, we thought it would be best to call it a community meeting, so that the communities will come together, not just our community, but people that, you know, will use the feature. And it's going, we have a great plan in place that we're just starting. And we did want to flip the switch and have the community give us their input as we go forward, so that we can include their input. So I'm real excited. We did get a lot of suggestions, which I will send around to all of you, just to report what happened. But I was really very pleased with the meeting, the first one, so we haven't really planned another one yet, but it will be before coming. And we want to have this one before school without, that was the other important reason why we went so quickly, because once it's vacation time, you know, people are everywhere. So, we thought we'd get the first one in anyways, and then we'll be planning another one in a different location to property around the city, so.
Thank you. Could ask everybody to meet you in a kayak and a river.
That's right.
Maybe you see how many. Thank you. Under voice vote, we have two resolutions. One is a resolution to approve the minutes of May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, meeting in Glens Falls Council. And two is a resolution to approve the clerk's monthly DPW report. Do we have a motion for voice vote? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Thank you. Under roll call vote, are there any resolutions the council would like to put for discussion? Not hearing any, we'll go with resolution three. It's a resolution to increase revenue line, A zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine dash four-zero-eight-nine, government aid ARPA by five-hundred-and-ten dollars, new increased budget expense line, A six-seven-one-zero dash four-four-seven-nine, Crandall Park other contracted services by five-hundred-and-ten dollars, to pay the rental fees for a trenching machine needed to install electric and data lines at Crandall Park Rear Field and to support the city surveillance camera system in that area. Four is a resolution to increase revenue line, A zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine-nine dash four-zero-eight-nine, government aid ARPA by eighty-three thousand, and decrease budget expense line, A six-seven-two-one-zero dash four-four-seven-nine, stadium other contracted services by eighty-three thousand, to complete the payment for the new concrete pad for Eastfield Stadium bleachers. Five is a resolution to authorize the controller to decrease revenue line, A one-one-nine-nine zero dash nine thousand, contingency by ten thousand, to increase code enforcement, A three-four zero-one-two dash four-four-seven-nine, other contracted services by ten thousand, to pay for temporary rental offices at three-thirty-three Glen Street, Glens Falls, for the Building and Co's department, while the roof and the Building and Co. offices are repaired at DPW Dix Avenue. Six is a resolution to authorize the controller to increase expense line, A seven-eight-eight-one-zero dash twenty-six hundred, capital, cemetery capital improvements by sixty-five dollars, and decrease budget line expense, A seven, A seven-eight-eight-one-zero dash four-three-one-zero by sixty-five dollars, to have a yearly cemetery software subscription that would not have money's budget for this year's bill. Seven is a resolution to authorize the controller's office to increase, A zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine dash two-seven-zero-two-eight, A, city historian by five-hundred dollars, and increase line seven-five-one-zero dash three, dash zero-three-zero-zero, city historian supplies to allow the purchase items needed to complete the scrapbooking project that has been ongoing. Eight is a resolution to increase revenue line, A zero-zero-nine-nine-nine-nine dash four-zero-eight-nine, government aid ARPA by four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars and seven-hundred, four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, increase DPW expense line, A one-one-four-nine zero dash four-four-two-eight, building and property maintenance by four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty, to repair the DPW roof building at Dix Avenue. Nine is a resolution to award bid number, C G F two-four dash zero-four, Department of Public Works roof replacement mid-state industries, LTD, by the amount of four-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and authorize the mayor to enter into a contract approved by city attorney. Ten is a resolution with the Water and Sewer Board's positive recommendation, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with WCSD, Warren County Soil and Water Conservation District, funding to also enter into an agreement with Barton and LeJudas for engineering services for third ward drainage study for the Sanford Street NPS planning project in the form approved by the city attorney. Eleven is a resolution to authorize a necessary borrowing pursuant to a bond resolution to amend the original bond by newly established budget. Therefore, now being resolved that this capital budget in the amount of three-million-three-hundred-and-forty-five thousand is hereby approved for the Webster Avenue Pavement Preservation Project, PIN number one-seven-six-two-point-zero-zero, and that the capital account be increased by the city controller as presented here. Twelve is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a three-million-three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar bond, City Glens Falls, Warren County. City of Glens Falls, Warren County, New York, to pay the cost in connection with the Webster Avenue Pavement Preservation Project in for said city. Thirteen is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary agreements, certifications, or reimbursement requests for federal aid and/or marshelis, marshelissi aid on behalf, Marticelli, uh, aid on behalf of the City of Glens Falls with the State of New York, uh, Department of Transportation in connection with the advancement or approval of the Webster Avenue Pavement Preservation Project, and providing for administration of the project and the municipality's first instance, funding of project costs and permanent funding of local share of federal aid and state aid eligible projects. And for all project cost appropriations, therefore, are not, uh, so eligible. And it's further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed with the State of New York Commissioner of Transportation by attaching to any necessary agreement in connection with the project. It's further resolved that this resolution shall take, take effect immediately. Fourteen is a resolution to award bid, C G F two four, uh, dash zero, a bid for Webster Avenue Pavement Preservation Project, PIN number one seven six two, to Peter Louisi Brothers Contracting for the low bid of two million, two, uh, two million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents, contingent upon New York State Department of Transportation, concurrents from this award. Fifteen is a resolution to approve Great Man and Supplemental Consultant Agreement, S A number one, for the construction, inspection, and support services in the total amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the Webster Avenue Pavement Preservation Project, PIN number one seven six two point zero zero, and authorize the mayor to enter into agreement approved by the city attorney. Sixteen is a resolution to authorize the controller to increase revenue line, A zero zero nine 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 dash two six four eight zero, Insurance Recovery by ten thousand, ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, and increase budget expense line, A two three three one zero dash four four seven nine, Electrical Other Contracted Services by ten thousand, ninety-eight dollars and seventy-four cents, as the city has received insurance payment for a car accident on eleven two twenty-three at the intersection of School and South Street. Seventeen is a resolution to authorize the controller to increase budget revenue line, A zero zero nine 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 dash zero, dash two six eight zero, Insurance Recovery by five thousand, ninety-seven dollars and six cents, and increase budget expense line, A two three three one zero dash one thousand, Electric Personal Services by seventy, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, and increase expense, budget expense line, A two three three one zero dash two four hundred, Electric Highway Street Equipment by four thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. The city received a check from Network Adjusters for the damage to a crosswalk, uh, signal pole due to a motor vehicle accident. Eighteen is a resolution approving the grant to award up to twenty-four thousand dollars under the Adirondack Gateway Home Ownership Program, in accordance with the program's guidelines for case file two zero two one H B dash zero two seven, which has met all the qualifying requirements. Nineteen is a resolution authorizing the Community Development Annual Payments in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-seven cents to reimburse the expense for not-for-profit year, project year two thousand twenty-three agreement, reimbursement for a portion of the Community Development Director's salary, and to pay for advertisements related to the draft annual action plan for the upcoming program year. Twenty is a resolution to approve the updated agreement between the City of Glens Falls, New York, and Greater Glens Falls, L C, and Spring City Development Group, L L C, with regard to the D R I projects. Twenty-one is a resolution to retroactively approve encroachment permit, number three five dash two zero two four, as approved by Mayor Collins on June third, twenty twenty-four, for Verizon, New York Inc. Eleven, Ward's Lane, Manans, New York, two, one twenty-two oh four, Sawcut, approximately forty feet on Elm Street near South Street, to remove the pole and cable from the building from June third to July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, following city engineer and general requirement. Twenty-two is a resolution to approve the following encroachment renewal, awnings, trash barrels, clothing racks, exhaust fans, and sandwich boards to be placed outside the following business based on the approval and the, um, layout and compliance with Proag regulations from June first, twenty twenty-four through May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, Makado Restaurant, World Awareness Children's Museum, Carly Mankowski, and Associates of Glens Falls. Twenty-three is a resolution to approve encroachment permit, number thirty-seven dash twenty-four, for James Capitano, uh, twenty-four Kensington Road, Glens Falls, to work with the City of Glens Falls on replacing the sidewalk and from twenty-four Kensington Road from June twelfth, twenty twenty-four through June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, while in compliance with Proag regulations for public access on the sidewalk. Uh, twenty-four is a resolution to approve encroachment permit, number three four dash twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four, for Tracy Meredith, owner tax map number three zero two point one six dash one three dash two, commonly known as twenty-six by Underhaid Street, Glens Falls, to place an eight-by-eight moving pod in front of the property for the road edge, or an eight-foot by eight-foot moving pod in front of the property on the road edge from June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four through June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, and the second, for the placement of the moving pod when the property is sold no later than September first, two thousand twenty-four. Twenty-five is a resolution the council approves the following mobile food units, numbers, numbers thirty through thirty-three in your packet. Twenty-six is a resolution to approve the following outside dining encroachment permit renewals, which allows for the placement of chairs and tables at these businesses from June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, while in compliance with Proag regulations for public access on the sidewalk, as shown in their approved layout. Resolution to approve the following twenty twenty-four encroachment permits, permits number nine through twelve, and nine dash twelve, nine through twelve in twenty, dash twenty twenty-four. Permit nine is Makado, ten is Davidson's, eleven is Redici, and twelve is Spot Coffee. Twenty-seven is a resolution to approve the award. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
So vote.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Downey?
Yes.
Councilman Landry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gooden?
Yes.
Thank you. Old business, Councilman Clark?
I have none.
Councilman Downey?
None of this, uh.
Councilman Landry?
Um, just one thing, a reminder, Tom, you were mentioned it here tonight. People are still putting stuff under the bag. We are pretty in the road, uh, for all of you who are watching tonight, please don't do that. It causes problems with our sewers for one thing. And, uh, like I said, there's quite a bit of it out there, we may need to talk about that in the future.
Thank you. Councilwoman Palmer, old business.
Only to say that I'm really grateful that we are making some big steps forward on two longstanding water and sewer, uh, problem areas in the third ward, both Webster Avenue and DeSantis Street area that we just passed tonight, so thank you for that.
Thank you for the third ward.
Yes.
Old business, Councilman Landry. Councilwoman Gooden. New business, Councilman Clark?
I have none.
Councilman Downey?
None.
Councilman Landry?
Um, when I had to report that the efforts to transform city-owned property were formed in Glens Falls, swimming tennis club, and moving forward, uh, New York State D E C recently completed a wetland mediation study that shows where the wetlands on the property are and where developed the property can and cannot be. Uh, we've also been, we've awarded a contract to have items on the property that may be hazardous or need a special remediation done so that we can develop a cleanup plan for the property. And lastly, we're working with, um, Pat Dowd, um, on developing an R F P to have a feasibility study done to help us develop the project as we go forward. And we also have been offered, um, participation by the Glens Falls Brewery, helps pay for that.
Thank you. Uh, new business, Councilwoman Palmer?
I have the business.
Councilman Landry?
Nothing to worry about.
Councilwoman Gooden?
Well, I love this new business, uh, as they're, uh, doing this long year. Can I please remember this, this is, I know, I'm very, but. Someone can take a whole.
Yes, it is. I agree with you, Mary. For eight years, you've been very uncomfortable.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mary.
Can I tell you something, Mary, we got a lot of length over here.
Thanks, dude.
All right, we're up in it. All right, I've only got a couple of things, um, old business, I, um, Pride Fest last weekend was well organized and a large crowd, it was great, uh, Lar, excuse me, two weekends ago. Larak, the great weather, good large crowd, and it was fantastic to see Glens Falls is hopping and continuing to hop. Uh, under, uh, new business, I wanted, uh, the next council meeting, we'll have Chief Smith, um, come and present to you, and then I'll give you an update regarding the D R I, um, so that you can, uh, that we can all, uh, make sure we're on the same page, maybe answer any questions that you, you guys might have. And there was one more thing I, I, um, is great, oh my goodness. Well, whatever it was, it will have to be old business next time, because I, it's gone. I, if there's, we open up for, yeah, this job, I tell you, um, public comment, let's open back up, a public comment. Not seeing anybody here, anybody online?
No.
No? If we have no, uh, public comment, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.